Welcome to the Board of Trustees Public Agenda. The date is November 9, 2021, and the time is 6:05 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll begin our meeting with a public comment portion. Again, this is not for the public hearing. Anyone who wishing to speak for the public hearing can do so at that public hearing, but if anyone has any public comment, please feel free to raise your hand and we can let you join us in the meeting.
I believe there was, Mayor, I do believe that there was a request today via email for an invite from Monte Russo regarding road maintenance concerns, and he had asked to speak this evening at the meeting. I'm not sure if he's on. He was sent an invitation.
I just brought MCF.
Mr. Russo, are you on the call, I mean, at the meeting? Are you signed in?
Here's MCF. Sir, I am sending you up. I think you got it. Did you get it?
Cat?
Yeah, you want to?
MCF is Alan McFarland.
Oh, hi, Alan. Do you have something to say?
Yeah, I don't know how to get in the meeting. I'm happy to watch, and I don't know when to do it, but I wanted to make a general comment to the trustees.
Alan, I'm sending you a request to start your video. Whatever you want. Yep.
I think I've started my video. What else do I do, Cat?
Alan, you're on.
Oh.
And everybody can see you.
Okay. Would the Honorable Mayor and trustees like a brief speech from me about an issue that I think is a systemic one for us all? I'm happy to give brief comments if it's in order.
Yes, Mr. McFarland, this is the public session, the public comment session, section of the meeting, so feel free to make any public comment to the board.
Yeah, I mean, I have been out of town, or I would have raised the topic generically, but this has to do with the system that we now enjoy. Everyone who both tries to help the village on the committee or otherwise, which I think is causing, as we administer, perhaps more problems and issues for us than we deserve. And so that's the topic. If the trustees would like to hear my speech, I'll make it quickly and they can get on with regular business.
Mr. McFarland, can you just wait? We're having a little bit of a technical difficulty.
Yeah, I know, I had a huge difficulty.
I don't want to miss a word that you're against.
I had a huge difficulty just getting on.
Just stand by for a moment, okay?
Oh, yeah, no, happy to, whatever.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I can also do it later. You give me instructions.
No, just wait one moment, okay?
Yep.
All right, yeah, say something.
All right, we're ready to roll. Alan, thank you for your patience. We're having some technical difficulties. Sometimes it happens with Zoom, but we're looking forward to getting rolling here. So Alan, you've got about three minutes on your public comment, and we are, thank you very much again for your patience.
I'll make it as fast as I can. I think the Zoom format, by the way, if you talk to the authorities, is unsatisfactory. I don't know what we all can do about it, but it's a real handicap. My comments go to a procedure that we all follow, which we've gotten into for wonderful reasons over many years now, and that is that a number of people that want to operate individually or otherwise, or to have hearings for the regulation of the village, which is primarily always related to real estate. It relates to zoning, everything we know about, Architectural Review Board, planning, what we do with the future of the village. We have Nelson Pope and Voorhees as consultants, and they're good people. I know some of them. I've dealt with them. Chick Voorhees, I've dealt with at some length. I don't know Hank Pope, but I've known of him for some time. But as was a practice years ago even for our legal advice, where we got the DePietre's family who started advising everybody, and then the son took over, and he invited not just you five people that are in charge, but he would give advice to some of the committees. Nelson Pope and Voorhees has basically subsumed any role for the village having its own architect, engineer. We had one for years. I forget, I think 10 years ago he died or something, and so they perform an engineering function for the village and doing construction and for all the boards that hear matters, and they have their own engineers. I don't think any of Nelson Pope and Voorhees are themselves engineers, but they got them working for them, Kathy Isman. Some of your trustees who've been on the boards before, like Roy, know all about it. They've had decades of dealing with them. But I think when we have one group giving advice to you, giving advice, I believe, to the zoning board, giving advice at this point to the planning board, and when it's convenient, dropping out and recusing themselves for yet more people who are not acting really as defective village engineer, that then have to take their place and come in and start at scratch, is often, it creates discontinuities, it creates conflicts, it creates difficulty in each person, according to what they've taken under our regulations, discharging their duties. And if we want to do a good job, which everyone working for the village wants to do, I think it's something we got to look at. It's a problem. We've got Attorney Gray, who's a great fellow. Maybe it's good that our attorney not live in the village and so forth like it did for so many decades, but maybe the trade-offs, and maybe he needs some additional support for some reason. He may not, but each of these things gets, I'm sure, gets examined when the changes are made. But I think we have to look at the multiple cost, by the way, to extra cost and the method of timing and billing for our consultant. I mean, some of us dealt with David Emalita for years, and we dealt with Aldo, who was a real figure in the village. I think Mayor, a former mayor about three or four ago, who knew him from the Suffolk County Health Commission, got him involved. But that's my speech. I just think it's a matter that you really have to look at. We're making lots of changes in personnel, but this is a major figure in all sorts of things for all sorts of hearings. It doesn't happen at once. It goes board by board by decision. And you five have taken over some decisions from the boards, from the zoning board, maybe from the planning board, giving permission under the village laws to do things that are a change from what literally the village laws and regulations say, which is fine, that's in your power. But if the advice is coming from NPV, I think it bears scrutiny. End of speech. Thank you for the time, and fix this Zoom thing. I think people, the average citizen, including their attorneys and everybody, love to come in and see the five of you and get the satisfaction, even if they get voted down of making their case. It's important for human nature. So do your best, Mayor Jesse, get a better format, so you're not stuck in the office, and I'm not on the other end of the village, and we can't reason and talk together directly. Thank you all. Good luck, Charlene, in doing it by remote control. It's a real burden, but don't weaken. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Great to see you here on Zoom, even if it's not in person, and thank you very much for your comments. Really appreciate them. We'll see if there's anyone else who has a public comment. Again, if someone is here for a public comment for the public hearings, we have two tonight. We will see you there. If not, we'll wait for any additional hand raises to join us for our public comment portion of our meeting. I don't see any hands.
Mayor, if I will, I do have one email that was submitted to me today from someone who had asked if we could possibly read this into the record to the board. It's from Erin Scott. She says, "Good evening, board members. My name is Erin Scott, and I've been a resident of Southampton for a decade and Hampton devotee and supporter for 20 years. I bought a village bench dedicated to my husband's birthday nine years ago, which usually sits in front of the restaurant 75 Main due to COVID. The bench was removed two summers ago for outdoor dining. I reached out in August to find out the whereabouts of our bench and was told by Steve Phillips that it was located in storage. I have asked when the bench will be returned to its spot. However, Mr. Phillips said that he had not heard any word when the expanded outdoor dining will end and suggested I reach out to the mayor's office, who subsequently directed me to this board. It is my understanding that there are people who have also inquired about their benches sitting in storage. I want our bench to remain in its spot in front of 75 Main because that was the original agreement, and it is a great place to eat ice cream from the fudge company. Please enjoy and enjoy it sitting on the bench. Please let me know when the bench will be put back. Thanks for your attention, Erin Scott."
All right, thank you, Charlene and Erin. I'm not sure if you're listening tonight, but thank you very much for the comment. We will do that first thing tomorrow morning. We'll touch base with our Parks Department and DPW Department, Deputy Mayor is the liaison to that department, and we'll make sure that your bench gets placed right where it was supposed to be. We'll probably do a nice power wash and clean to it as well, but thank you for the update. We were not aware of that, but we'll make that happen straight away. So thank you again, Erin. Thank you, Charlene, for the comment. And did you just want to put on, there's a communication to the board from Monte Russo? Is that something that you wanted to either quickly summarize for the public comment portion?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I did not see the original email. I just saw the invitation that was sent as a panelist. I'm not sure if perhaps maybe Miranda has it. I think it was submitted to your office, but I did see a copy of an invitation that was sent to him this evening.
No problem. We'll just keep it as a communication to the board. Thank you very much for that. So we'll keep on moving here. The next up is the Employee of the Month, and the Employee of the Month for November is Ed West. He's a member of the Parks Department. His position is groundskeeper two. And I have an anecdote that Steve Phillips, who is supervisor, wrote to the board, and that is as follows. "Mr. West's job performance went above and beyond the call of duty. As of the end of August, Mr. West has been the head of the grass crew, keeping the grass, especially since the end of the summer, was a challenge due to the heavy amount of rain that we had. So knowing the quality of work that he and his team are performing, he clearly stands out right in the front of the public eye for everyone to see the high quality of work and his level of detail. So Mr. West has continued to perform above expectations in his job role, and he, Steve Phillips, as well as myself and our board, are thankful to have Mr. West as part of our team. So thank you again to Ed West, who's a groundskeeper two. And I can certainly say that when I also speak to other employees, as well as other members of our Department of Public Works, Ed is always getting a lot of high praise, and Ed, on behalf of our entire Board of Trustees, thank you very much for your work, and congratulations on being the Employee of the Month, and keep it up. So thank you again. So again, we'll keep on moving tonight. We have a few brief board presentations, as well as a discussion item. So our Deputy Mayor, Trustee Resta, will quickly give a DPW update. As we know, she's the liaison to the Public Works Department, so she's just quickly going to update us on some of the happenings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you probably noticed, we've had massive paving taking place all around the village. The milling, which is the grinding of the road itself, had taken place last week, and this week we are actually taking care of the paving. Today, Main Street was completed in full. It was closed down, but fully reopened by 1:00 PM, so everybody was working very hard to get that done so it wouldn't encroach on what was happening in the business district. I want to thank Paul and Steve and the DPW, who have been working very hard to get this done and get it done very quickly and getting it done right. I'm happy to say that there will be no disturbance in the village downtown area on Veterans Day. The paving that day will be taking place down by the railroad station. We want to honor and we will honor our veterans with the respect that they deserve on Veterans Day. If you've noticed, some sectors of the benches and the garbage receptacles have been removed. We're taking out a few at a time. They're going to the DPW station to be refurbished, to be cleaned, to be sanitized. The benches, they get a little dog from mold and mildew, so they're all being power washed, and the receptacles and the containers for the receptacles have been, they're being cleaned and refurbished, and part of what we're going to do, or our future plan, I'll be speaking about also, has to do with those receptacles that will be being replaced. They've been doing extensive power washing to the sidewalks. It's a little bit difficult to get that just right because we're trying to use an environmentally friendly chemical to use in cleaning the pavement. So it's been taking a little bit longer, but we just want to make sure that it's environmentally friendly, what we're doing with the sidewalk. So that work is going to continue as well. And we are working on a plan to reset the brickwork on the Main Street area so it looks as good as it does on Job's Lane. And with that, we are also working on a plan to do some brickwork around the tree bed so the mulch that we plant doesn't fall all over the sidewalk, and it causes another problem. So that's all part of a future plan that hopefully will be complete by the spring. And along with that, as I mentioned with the garbage receptacles in our quest for going green in this village, we are looking to bring in the bellies, the solar powered belly receptacles, and hopefully that will be in place at least on Main Street. It has to be, it's costly, it's going to be done in sections, and there's a learning curve with that as well. But we will be able to recycle and compact our garbage. So that's moving us into the future. I think that's it with the downtown portion of it. I hope I didn't forget anything. The street trees and the garbage receptacle. So hopefully you'll be seeing a big difference. We want to get everything all screwed up for our holiday festival that's coming Saturday after Thanksgiving Day. We've been working in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. It's going to be events that whole day. The poster will be coming out in the next couple of days, and everything is going to be geared to the business area and to help our businesses on that day, which is Small Business Saturday, as per American Express. And plus, at the end of the day, there will be the parade of lights and fireworks as well. So that's what is coming as far as that's concerned as well. But hopefully everything will be cleaned up and spiffy and ready to go for that day. So that's it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Resta. The next board presentation will be by me, and that is about the 2021-2022 fiscal year capital budget. As we spoke about, the village in the past has not done a capital budget. We certainly haven't done one on a three-year time period. So we'd like to propose a three-year capital budget, and we'll be having a resolution later on tonight to create a public hearing so that we can create a capital budget over a three-year period. The capital budget takes into account capital reserves that we have and $975,000 each year that the village traditionally has committed into the Capital Reserve Fund. So there's a number of areas that we would like to use the capital budget in, whether that's machinery for our Department of Public Works to help improve the village, whether it's for updating sidewalks and other important projects. We're looking forward to this public hearing. So it's just simply an announcement that we have a capital budget. We wanted to thank our Treasurer, Charlene Cagle Betts, as well as the Budget and Finance Committee, and our board is looking forward to having a public hearing in the beginning of December. So thank you again. That's my presentation. And Trustee Robin Brown will give a brief update on the Southampton Search Committee.
Mayor, if I could just add that tomorrow, the capital plan will be posted on the village website, and anyone who would like to come out and speak about capital projects, any capital projects that are proposed on that can do that at the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, my fellow trustees. Good evening, Southampton Village. It's an update for the Police Chief search. The interview panel members are made up of our clergy, trustees, business professionals that support the village. Southampton Village seeks a dynamic, professional chief of police with significant and demonstrative contemporary policing and extreme executive management experience, a collaborative style, superior communication skills, and a strong interpersonal and public service skills. The police chief will administer plans and direct operations of the police department functioned to protect life and property through law enforcement and crime prevention activities for Southampton Village. To date, we have 13 applicants. Interviews are scheduled to start this week, and we will keep you apprised of that. It is still open if anyone desires to submit their resume, and the information is found on our village website. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Brown. And we have two public hearings. We'll get to that in just a moment. And then, not a board presentation, but a discussion item. Trustee McLaughlin is leading the charge with helping us create and amend some legislation regarding gas-powered leaf blowers, as well as licensing of landscapers. So I will turn this over to you, Trustee McLaughlin, and thank you for your hard work on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Plan Commission meeting last week, and I mentioned to one of the co-chairs, Mr. Lieberman, about the issue regarding leaf blowers. Obviously, we've all received complaints from residents regarding quality of life issues. And I would like the Plan Commission to assist us in making any, for the determinations as to what we should do going forward. And I would like to bring up to all of you to see what you and the rest of the trustees think as to how we should proceed. Again, I propose that we bring it to the Plan Commission and see what they can do in terms of determining a recommendation to go forward. So does anybody have any ideas aside from discussing with the Plan Commission?
Any other updates? I know you'd wanted to reach out to some landscapers and get their thoughts, and obviously environmentalists and concerned citizens alike, so I'm just wanted to.
I did reach out to PD about how many summonses were given since the seasonal ban was enacted several years ago. So I do want to take a look at that data. I'd be more happy to share it with all of you in the public to see again how we can look at what could be the issue overall and really have a fair and equitable outcome for all those involved. I do want to reach out to landscapers, see how they fared with the ban and see how we can go forward. Also, again, as we all know, the science is in. I know who didn't see the article in The Times, also the journal, that was circulated amongst some residents. So I do want to, again, so the Plan Commission, look at them, and obviously do a, reach out with the landscapers as well. And also, I do know the town is also looking at drafting some forms of legislation. So that's all I have.
Joe, I'm not up to speed because I wasn't involved with it, but when the original legislation was passed banning leaf blowers during the summer period, what was the logic behind that, and why wasn't the ban extended for the full year? And even given that it wasn't extended for the full year, what are the factors that are preventing us now from extending the ban for the full year? Aren't electric leaf blowers also a good substitute? Or what is the argument for gas-powered leaf blowers, I guess is my question? Because everything that I read says that the most polluting thing, noise pollution, air pollution, I'm not even sure they're very effective in doing the job they're meant to do. It just seems they blow leaves from one side of somebody's lawn onto somebody else's lawn, and then they blow it back again. So I'm not sure why we even allow these things.
That is correct, Trustee Stevenson. There's a lot of data that reflects a negative impact environmentally to using gas-powered leaf blowers. The reason why it wasn't done year-round, I think, was a lot of, there was a lot of perspective from the landscaping community in terms of how powerful we, the industrial size of leaf blowers was, and even with some perspective from our own DPW, say, you know, when it comes time for a storm, the electric ones are not as powerful as the gas. I'm not a landscaper, so I can't definitively say that's true. However, I do think we should take a look at this in terms of how it worked for the season for the last several years, and also look at, you know, how we can shape legislation to address, maybe do a phase-in process. There's many things that we can do, but I get to reach out to landscaping, which I will be doing soon. But again, I have an engagingly Plan Commission to get some foundation as to how to go forward. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very good. That was very helpful. Thank you, and we're looking forward to continue updates. Thank you for staying on top of this. We'll continue to move on with our agenda tonight. We have two public hearings. The first public hearing is the Community Development Block Grant. We have two presenters, the Heart of the Hamptons, Molly Bishop, and the Southampton Daycare Center, Rachel Cope. So I'd like to make a motion to open this public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor? So Charlene, I think we have Molly Bishop as an attendee, and Cat, we can move forward with, if Molly is here, we can have her come in. I can see her in the lobby.
Yes, Mayor, Molly is here to give her presentation. I know that Rachel Cope from the Southampton Daycare Center was not, but she did give me something to read to the board. So we can bring Molly in first. Hi, Molly.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for having me. Thank you, Mayor and Board of Trustees, for this opportunity. Heart of the Hamptons has in past years received money from the Community Development Block Grant. We would be most grateful for that. Again, this year, we, you know, we have been before you quite a bit in the last couple of months, so a lot of what our talking points are, you guys have heard many times. But we are still seeing about three times as many people in need as we would have in 2019. So far this year, we've given out about $140,000 worth of meals. At this time in 2019, it was only $50,000 meals. And so any help that we can get. And so any help that we can get from the village, the county, the the federal block grant to help to offset the amount of money that we have to spend purchasing food. We simply can't keep up with the with the demand from donated food. And so a chunk of our budget goes to purchasing food as well as other basic essentials for our neighbors. Soap, toothpaste, toothbrushes, socks, underwear, things that you can't get donated from other sources. So we'd be most grateful if if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to ask them. But we did submit a whole application to the village with the details on on our operating and request.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Molly.
Is there anything else as far as great opportunity? We're happy to have the community block grants available for for both the Heart of the Hamptons and Southampton Day Care Center. Is there any particular use? I know you said there's so many operations that you have, whether it's meals or other types of community service. Is there anything specifically, just just for the public, that that this block grant would be used for specifically? Of course, you mentioned all those great programs are ready, but anything else specific would be a great help.
Well, I mean, one of the things that we've noticed in the last couple of months is a is a big uptick in people asking for us to buy socks, underwear, and soap and shampoo. We can't get that from donated sources. We'd we have to purchase it. So we've been spending quite a bit of money the last couple of months to do so. It's, you know, it's really tough because people can get clothing and coats and even used shoes. But some of these more personal items, they don't have the money for and they can't get other places. So we definitely need to add to our budget in order to be able to to keep up with providing those things.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Molly.
Mr. Mayor, what are community block grants? Where do they come from? Where's the money come from? And
trustee, if you will, community development block grants are fed is actually a federal allocation that's made to all the municipalities. Village is a member of the Suffolk County Consortium. And the county receives the money and allocates it to certain programs. We, as a village, are fortunate that we we actually receive about thirteen thousand dollars annually. We I think that there might be an additional section of funding available this year. We haven't received any word on that. But generally, we take our thirteen thousand dollars every year and we allocate it between our two organizations that serve the population that meets the the federal community development block grant criteria. So we do have two organizations that are located within the village. So we pass these funds through. And traditionally, a Heart of the Hamptons and the Southampton Daycare Center have been really the only eligible applicants within the village boundaries that qualify for the funding. And the funding is basically just passed through for human services purposes. And every year, the the funding has been, you know, used by these two organizations. And although it's not a large amount of funding, I'm sure six thousand five hundred dollars for each of the organization does make a difference.
Thank you, Charlene.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. If if you have anything else that comes up in reviewing the application, I'd be happy to answer questions at another time, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, well, I do have a letter here from Rachel Copped. I'm just going to read it into the record. She says, Dear Mayor Jesse Warren and trustees, although I am writing on behalf of the Southampton Daycare Center Fountain of Youth, founded nineteen eighty-five. We are the one of the only nonprofit daycare centers in the town of Southampton. We provide a safe nurturing environment for children ages two through five years old, as well as providing before and after care for students in the Southampton Elementary School. Our center is truly a community effort, and the continued support of Southampton Village is greatly appreciated. I'm proud to say that our center has remained open during the COVID-19 pandemic and provided working families with a healthy space for their children. We have continued our scholarship program, even though the even during the tough past year. This has made it possible for many of our families to afford to enroll their children by lowering tuition prices upon income. Our parents live and work in this community, and we strive to help them succeed. Our center also provides teaching positions for our staff of eight. All of our teachers are also members of this community, some with children in our schools and some just starting out. They have all stayed on board during these challenging times and have remained optimistic and strong educators. I ask for your continued support tonight for the Southampton Daycare Center. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Rachel Copped, Executive Director.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Charlene. Are there any questions from the board or comments from the public related to this public hearing? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to close this public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We have a second public hearing. But this is, we just concluded the first public hearing. We've had some board presentations and employee of the month announcement and some discussions. But given that we have another public hearing and suggested resolutions, I'm I'm understanding right now from members of the public that there are further technical difficulties. Some people on the YouTube channel are having a hard time hearing. So I want to make sure that we have our public hearing, the next public hearing and resolutions entirely on the on the public record. So what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to request a brief five-minute recess. We'll put this on pause. Please attendees, thank you for your patience. I just want to make sure that everything is crystal clear for everyone to hear. We'll talk this over amongst ourselves, get back to to the the public hearing and the resolutions. But I appreciate the patience. So we're going to ask for a quick five-minute recess. We'll sort this out and get right back to everybody. So thank you very much. Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks for your patience. We've been pretty good here on our Zoom meetings, but for whatever reason, tonight, we're having a few technical difficulties. But we appreciate everyone staying with us tonight. We hope we hope that things are catching up. There may be a bit of a lag. We understand that a few people are having trouble hearing. But we understand that on our YouTube page, it is actually working. If people hit pause, wait for five seconds and then then continue. The lag may may actually help. So again, we apologize for the difficulties. We are trying our best here, and I appreciate everyone's help who's who arranged for the Zoom tonight. So we have our second public hearing, and I'm going to make a motion to open it. That is a application for a special exemption permit filed by the East End African American Museum and the Center for Excellence, DBA, the Piers Concert Museum. Again, I'll make a motion to open. Is there a second? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you. So first, I believe we have I believe we have Anthony will be presenting. But Anthony, if you have any members of your team who would like to go first, please let me know. I see Anthony, we have Chick Voorhees, we have Dr. George at Greer Key, and we have a few others who would like to present. So we'll have the presentation, and then we'll open this up to both board and public comments.
Hey, Mayor, bringing in Anthony. And you want Georgette in, you said? Is that correct?
We'll start with Anthony first, and he can help direct us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Evening.
All right, shall I begin?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Warren, and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Anthony Curcio, Brown, Oldman, and Delio, located at five thirty-eight Broad Hollow Road, Suite three oh one, Melvin, New York, one one seven four seven. My firm represents the Southampton African American Museum, or SAM, a DBA under the East End African American Museum and Center for Excellence. The village and town of Southampton, together with SAM, are proposing a museum use of the property at fifty-one Pond Lane, in addition to requesting parking waivers. The museum includes the restoration of the former Piers Concert House in its original location, construction of a new visitor center on the west side of the site, and additional improvements to the site itself. The town of Southampton purchased this land in cooperation with the Village of Southampton and SAM for the purpose of establishing the Piers Concert Visitor Center and Museum. The proposed project meets many community goals for cultural awareness, museum curation, education, and reflection slash contemplation on the life of Piers Concert. The site has historical significance as the site was the homestead of Piers Concert and has been marked as a historical site under village, state, and national designations. Piers Concert was born as an adventured servant, sold into slavery, gained his freedom, and was a legendary whaler, prominent resident of the Village of Southampton, a devout Christian and a philanthropist. The subject property is on the westerly side of Pond Lane, with frontage on Pond Lane. Directly to the east of the subject property is Agawam Park with Lake Agawam to the southeast. Directly to the north of the subject property is a residence that borders the Veterans Memorial Hall and the Southampton Cultural Center. And south of the subject property is vacant land. The applicant is requesting a special exception use to use the property as a museum in an R twenty zone pursuant to Section one sixteen dash twenty-three B twenty of the Village Code, all in accordance with the site plan submitted and incorporated herein. For any and all information regarding the applicant meeting the general standards for a special exception use permit pursuant to Village Code, Section one sixteen dash twenty-two, we turn the board's attention to the applicant's memorandum of support dated October fourteen twenty-one and the zoning consistency report dated May fifth, twenty twenty-one, both of which were submitted as part of the application to the Board of Trustees. The applicant is also requesting a waiver of off-street parking requirements at the property. We are proposing six parking spaces when fifty-three required, resulting in a deficiency of forty-seven spaces pursuant to Village Code one sixteen dash fourteen date. Again, for any and all information regarding the requested parking waivers, we turn the board's attention to the latest parking study filed with the board dated August tenth, twenty twenty-one, and revised November second, twenty twenty-one. With me today, I have Chick Voorhees of Nelson Pope and Voorhees, Bob Nelson of Nelson Pope and Voorhees, both site plan and planning experts. I also have Osman Barry of Nelson and Pope. He is the traffic engineer, and he can answer any questions you may have regarding the parking. So with that, the board has any questions regarding the application, myself, or the experts would be happy to help you and answer those questions.
Thank you, Anthony. Really appreciate it. We'll turn this over to Chick Voorhees. And again, I just wanted to remind the public that this is a special exception permit as well as for parking. This is not, we'd have no jurisdiction over square footage, setbacks, other types of variances, site plans. That's for the ZBA and the planning board. This particular public hearing has to do, again, with parking and a special exemption permit for a museum. So I just wanted to reiterate that to the public so we know why we are here. And again, thank you, and we'll we'll turn this over to Chick Voorhees.
Mayor, I don't believe Chick was going to testify tonight. I think he was just there for questions. Oh, he's coming in? Okay.
Yeah. Hi, Chick, you're in.
Yes, thank you, Kat. Just just. Yeah, I don't want to add to the length of time for the hearing. Mr. Curcio's comments were very straightforward. We do have the application pending. All of the necessary materials were submitted. There is a planning and zoning consistency report. I'll just say briefly that the use will benefit the area as a result of reconstructing the historic home, retaining the existing historic cottage, and adding a new visitor center. In fact, that visitor center would be ten feet lower than the allowable height for a residence. The site will be well landscaped. It will act as an extension of Agawam Park, creating an inviting place for visitors to reflect on the life of Piers Concert. You do have the site plan that is part of the application, and we do believe we are completely consistent with the special permit criteria as outlined in the code and mentioned by Mr. Curcio. So that concludes my remarks. I'll certainly be available if there are any questions.
Thank you, Chick. Appreciate it.
Most welcome.
If there's any public comment, we can we can let you in right now. So again, thank you, Anthony and Chick, and we'll be waiting public comment from anyone in the any attendees. I see Joanne Morgan.
She just put her hand up. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. She's coming in. There you are, Joan. You're in. Can you unmute and start your camera? I'll send you the request if you need it. Here's one. Here's the request to unmute. Yep. Hi.
Hi, I'm Joan McGivern from Toomey, Latham, and Shea. We're here representing the Klanskies, who live at seven Pond Lane, which is adjacent and behind fifty-one Pond Lane. They share a driveway with fifty-one Pond Lane, as well as we also represent the Yonnies, who live at sixteen Culver Street, which shares a northwest boundary with fifty-one Pond Lane. At the outset, we we want to emphasize that we fully support the reconstruction of the Piers Concert homestead, and that's not why we're here. We're here primarily because we object to the board's intervention in this manner and taking jurisdiction away from the ZBA to decide what should be or should have been decided by the ZBA. Our general objections are that our general objections have been laid out in detail in our letter. But suffice it to say that the crux of our objection is that this property was was bought and owned and is owned by the town of Southampton with community preservation funds. They it was supposed to be an open space targeted preservation area. Instead, we've got the proposal adding a four thousand four hundred and ten square foot visitor center, which is hardly preserving open space. Moreover, under the IMA, we believe there's no authority to operate a visitor center without additional authority from the town. And the town hasn't formally authorized the village to create a visitor center of this scale and proportion. The purposes of the Community Preservation Fund were to preserve community character and historic places. But and while we, again, we support the historic preservation of the concert homestead, we hardly see how a four thousand four hundred and ten square foot visitor center is preserving an historic place. There's no precedent for it in the community. All the homesteads are preserved housing within the town of Southampton do not have visitor centers, and particularly not on the scale we're talking about here. The most likely analogous property is the Thomas Halsey Homestead, which doesn't have a visitor center, but it has a beautiful garden in the back, and they rent it out from time to time. So getting back to the the use of second use exception, we believe that the activities that are proposed to be hosted by the visitor center are more in line with philanthropic, fraternal, social, and educational institutions, which is a use prohibited in a residential neighborhood and normally requires three acres. We don't believe that the the uses proposed by this visitor center are in keeping with a normal museum. We've also outlined some of the other objections we have, particularly with respect to the parking exception, which is substantial. You're talking about an eighty-eight point seven percent reduction in available parking for this visitor center. I think the rest of one other concern we have is with the construction, which nowhere in the application does it deal with. which nowhere in the application does it deal with the fact the Clancy's have a shared driveway, and it doesn't address how the construction is going to be implemented in such a way that their, their access to their property during this time is assured. I think that summarizes my comments, that we detailed our comments to the board previously in a ten-page letter. If the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Joanne. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, Mayor, I have two questions. For Councilman Curcio, what is, to clarify, what is the plans for the center in terms of, of usage? Could you clarify that for the public in terms of the, what, what's being proposed in terms of the usage of, of the center on site?
Just a cor, just a correction on the square footage. It's going to be four thousand two hundred and ninety square feet. We recently submitted an updated plan to the board this afternoon, so just be aware of that. The, the visitor center will be used to curate collections, display artifacts, and expand the appreciation and awareness of the legacy of Pierce Concert. So it's going to be more of an exhibit center than anything else.
That.
So there's not going to be any, you know, private events, you know, because I know the other properties, as was mentioned, they do, the Stroking Museum does rent out their properties for weddings and stuff, but I wasn't sure if that was the case here. Is it going to be, you know, can people rent it for pictures or for wedding reception or what have you?
No, we're not, we're not in the business of running a catering hall or anything like that. It's going to be strictly more for educational purposes for kids if they want to learn about the history of Pierce Concert, maybe some field trips, that sort of thing, but nothing, nothing like a wedding or a party or anything like that.
Then why does it have an outdoor amphitheater?
Doesn't have an outdoor amphitheater. It's outdoor seating. I don't know where this amphitheater language came from, but that's incorrect.
And also, my other question would be, this, again, I'm going up where I read the paper last week. Is, is this plan submitted or the plan submitted today? I, I get to see. Or, or is that plan or these plans, is that what the zoning board has approved? Because I know the zoning board is going back and forth with them for several hearings now. I wasn't sure what the status of, of this, of, of this plan lies in front of me versus plans have been looked at by the zoning board and the planning board.
How is this? That, that plan that you're, that we're discussing is the same plan that was filed with the zoning board, the appeals and the planning board. So they both have this plan already.
Okay. Because I, because again, what I read in the paper said that, you know, that you, that the, and I could be wrong, but I believe that the museum withdrew the plan and they resubmitted this plan. So I, I just want clarification on that front, if, if you can give it to me.
We withdrew our application from the zoning board because now the, the board trustees has jurisdiction. So that's why we did that.
But you still need to resubmit for the variances.
We've done that already. I don't really want to talk about what we're doing with the zoning board here. We're trying to stick with the board trustees, what we're, what's before you today.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, Georgette has her hand up.
Okay, Dr. Key, you're welcome to come in. Again, Trust McLaughlin, you know, obviously if variances are needed, setbacks, square footage above, over and above GFA, wet, anything, you know, any type of wetlands, et cetera, variances, those would all be ZBA. Again, we're, tonight, we're providing a special exception permit and waiving parking.
Absolutely. I, I would just, I would just commenting on what I read in the paper, that's all.
Okay, and Sarah Cotts also.
Um, I just wanted to add one comment that the mayor signed the application, which we found curious, and feel that the mayor probably should recuse himself. We mentioned that in our letter.
Thank you very much. Any, is there any additional comments?
Can you just clarify one thing? I don't see where the shared driveway is with the plan.
On the south side.
I, I didn't know what Ms. McGovern was speaking about, McGivern. Or she's gone.
Gina, if you, if you have the plan, trustee Arresta.
Can somebody point out where that shared driveway is that Ms. McGivern was speaking about?
Yes, it's on the south side. It is the existing driveway that does serve the residents to the rear, and the Pierce Concert Visitor Center would take access off that driveway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chick.
You're welcome.
And I, I, will it be hours posted? Because I do know with the shared driveway, which parking, that could be an issue in terms of hours, hours of operations. Has that been established thus far?
No.
No, ours has not been established as of yet. They have been finalized.
All right. And, and thank you, Anthony, and thank you, Joanne. We have, we'd like to just keep, keep some order here, and I know we have Dr. Key ready to speak, and we also have a representative from Preserve Long Island. We're happy to get back to you again for a, for a second comment, but just want to keep this in a proper order here. And again, thank you everyone for your patience. Dr. Key, we, you may be on mute.
Dr. Key, we don't have any volume for you, ma'am. Make sure your sound is up on your computer. Can you speak? Dr. Key?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, I, I just didn't know, I, I didn't know what was going on, so I just wanted to wait till it was my turn. Okay, so, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to chime in on a few things as the design chair of this committee. I wanted to thank the trustees and everyone here tonight. And as I was on, I just wanted to follow up with a few things. As you know, this project is a joint project with the village, and I've been involved since the long haul, myself and Brenda Simmons. This is a joint application. The village is an applicant in this project as well as the town. And so when I'm talking about this project, you are, the village is an applicant. The mayor is an applicant. The supervisor is an applicant and subsequently has been a part of the process. So I don't see the village as having a conflict of interest. I don't see the town as having a conflict of interest. This project as a whole is a project for the village residents, for the town residents, for the county residents, and for the general public. So I think there is a benefit to this project. Unfortunately, the history of the project in itself is beneficial to the residents. I will say that. In terms of the significance of this project, this project is reminiscent of a project called Weeksville in Brooklyn. So when it was said that the integrity of the project, I would draw your attention and offer to you the Weeksville Heritage Society, where they have seventeen-century hunterfly houses, and they have a visitor center. So if I can offer up for an example to you of a model that we looked at as well is Weeksville Heritage House. So please keep that on your radar in looking at significant projects that are similar to this. And there is some preservation quality to why there is a necessity to us to have relief. So that's one of the things that I wanted to mention. And again, I thank you for your time, and I yield my time to Sarah.
Thank you, Dr. Key. Sarah, good to see you.
Good to see you. Thanks so much. I just wanted to speak again on behalf of Preservation Long Island. My name is Sarah Cotts. I'm the Preservation Director, and I have been working with Georgette and some other folks on this project and many others for several years now. And of course, my organization, Preservation Long Island, used to be Splea, the Society for the Preservation of Long Island Antiquities, and even before I came five years ago and joined the, the organization, there was folks before me deeply involved in, in the preservation of this site going back twenty years. And of course, Georgette and Brenda have been working for, for many, many years trying to get this place protected and preserved and landmarked. So it's been a very, very long time coming, and through the whole way, the village and the town and different groups in the community have been very, very supportive. And I, I, I've been so impressed with how transparent the process has been. As Georgette said, the planning has been done with the village and the town, and this is all public record. You know, the plans are available at the village. If anybody is curious, please go and see them. You know, the, as the Chair of the Design Committee, I know Georgette has been available and welcoming to work with anybody in the community that would have liked to have been part of the process. So the process has been transparent and inclusive, and I think the outcome is going to be really fabulous. And a lot of the issues raised have been addressed many, many times before, and I'm sure Anthony Curcio could speak more to, to the merits of the variance. First, absolutely crystal clear that this is a museum. There's a wonderful collection, which includes the building itself. So something to keep in mind is the building itself is an artifact, and, and it's going to be the timbers that were taken when the building was torn down, that very, you know, horrible experience. But what we were able to see from that was the timbers of the building itself. So the building is going to be part of the exhibition. And the visitor center is going to be there, so that building can be restored to the nineteenth century, which means it's not going to have crazy HVAC and lights and computers and all this stuff in there. It's going to be as close as we can get to what Mr. Concert would have had in his home. So we want folks to understand what it was like for him to be living in the village at this time in his community. And this is going to be able, because we have a visitor center where children coming from school groups can interact and have some programming, where artifacts, we have some really tremendously beautiful artifacts. One of the artifacts that were recovered on the site by an archaeologist after the demolition had taken place was a bamboo brush from Japan is, is, my specialty is, it's a long story, but Japanese archaeology. And this is without a doubt to me a bamboo brush, and it seems like something that Mr. Concert would have been given as a gift, of course, when he went to Japan as part of the Mercator Crew. So that's something that can be put on display. That visitor center is going to serve that role in providing a good, secure, climate-controlled space to have programming, to have exhibitions, because we don't want something so wonderful and delicate as that artifact to be in a space without HVAC and, and really good climate control and, and that sort of thing. So the site has been planned top to bottom. Each of the buildings have their own role, and they work together as a group. So we strongly support this application, and we encourage you to, to support it too. And thanks so much to everyone for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mayor, there are no hands up. Somebody just put one up. Hang on one second. It's Joan McGivern.
Okay, thank you.
And also another person. Do you want them in now? Monty Russo.
Monty, maybe in, she was here for a, a comment earlier. We can get back to Monty about if, Monty, if this is about some of the roads, we're happy to have you come back in after this public hearing. If it's about this public hearing, obviously feel free to speak. So just, just let us know what this is. So in the interim, we could have Joan move, move forward, and then Monty can, can, can decide whether she would like to participate in this public hearing about the special exception, or if she'd like to do a separate comment to put in the public record.
Yeah, we just want to emphasize here that we feel the village does have a conflict, and we especially don't think the mayor should be voting on this. Transparency doesn't mean that you have plans on file. I mean, you don't have the authority because the town hasn't blessed this officially. There was a hearing before the town in April, and they still haven't approved under the IMA, the village, or Sammy managing a visitor center.
Okay, thank you again.
Georgette would like to speak again.
Okay, Dr. Key.
Go ahead, Georgette. Dr. Key.
Okay, I'd just like to say officially for the record, you know, everybody has an opinion. And just because someone says, you know, that, what they feel, again, for the record, someone who has worked on projects like this similarly, I believe that the mayor should not recuse himself from this because buy-in is really important to this project. And I do feel it's very important to have the mayor and the village board as a whole continue to be a part of this process. Again, it's been three administrations that I personally have worked with and this team has worked with. There is not a conflict of interest. I feel specifically that the IMA has clearly stated specifically what the charges prior to your administration, the administration before you, and the one before that. More specifically, the supervisor also has weighed in on this project. And we know that other levels of government that we are seeking funding from as well has weighed in on this project. I feel strongly that we need to have buy-in from the top of this process. After all, we know how this party began, and we know how this party must end. So again, interpretation is everything, and not that this interpretation is the correct interpretation that's been put before us. And again, I would not be a part of this project if I did not, as a volunteer of many hours, many years, many, much time put in, have been involved if I did not have the participation of the leader of the village involved.
Thank you, Dr. Key.
Sarah Cotts would like to speak again.
Okay.
Hey, hey, yes, just, just to follow up on the comment about the town support. And Mr. Curcio could probably elaborate on this. There, there are documents signed by the town supervisor. Also, because this is a town-owned project, it does get interpolated into the CPF planning documents, and that is also very clear what the use of this property is in terms of the town planning. There, I believe it's called the Maintenance and Stewardship Plan for the CPF Properties. So there's plenty of town documents related to the use of this property and the ownership by the town and in partnership with the village. And of course, that, that memorandum, since the very beginning of the planning process, has been between the three entities. And I'm sure Mr. Curcio can, can explain more of the details, but I, I don't think that's quite true that there's no town support because there must be by definition, because we have all of these, these things in place. So yeah, maybe it just needs to be kind of elucidated a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And as you know, the, I believe the, the site plan was actually presented in front of the town board at a public hearing. So it was an additional opportunity for the town to see it. And in addition, I know there was grant applications, and the grants were actually so specific that an IACptic System Grant was put in front of the Town Water Quality Improvement Program. was put in front of the Town Water Quality Improvement Program for that public hearing. So, you know, sure.
I just want to say, if I may, the afternoon, I'm curious to know when you guys are going to go in front of the ARB. Because given the delicacy of it all, I would like possibly to see a, the ARB, the ARB opponent, because it's a very sensitive property. Also, if we, I don't know if it's legal, if the zoning board, if it's as a joint application, given that it is village property, and they can collaborate and opine together as to what the best way to give the variances or preserve the historic structures or whatever have you. So I don't know if the app would adapt to that, but I would certainly encourage them to do a pre-submission to the to the ARB and maybe even have this be a joint application in front of both boards. So there's no overlap in terms of what variances are given or approvals are given. I don't know if that would be something that the app would be open to in terms of the museum board members.
The mayor, may I jump in for a second?
Sure, no problem.
So Trustee McLaughlin, if the ZBA desires such an opinion or recommendation from the ARB, I think that would be before them as it relates to the variances that are being requested. So I think that's something that would be in front of the ZBA to do that.
I'm just saying for the public record, as my idea, I'm not, you know, saying it should happen. I'm just saying that it's an idea that should be presented.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question as well.
Feel free, Trustee Stevenson.
My question, I'm not sure if Anthony or Chick can answer this, but there are certainly other museums in the village. Southampton Historical Museum, Pelotro Museum, Southampton Art Center, Cultural Center, all of these seem to me to not have 50 parking spaces on their properties. Pelotro Museum, obviously, just a small little building, but hardly any of these seem to have the parking spaces that would have been required. So have you done any analysis of the existing museum uses within the village? How they handle their parking requirements and how how that might compare with the Paris Concert Museum? It seems to me that we're, you know, the code requiring, what, 55 spaces that, and you're looking at the Southampton Historical Museum, which is considerably larger structure. And I've been to that museum. I can't imagine there's more than 10 or 15 of that many parking spaces on that property, if there are that much. Have you looked at those other application, other museum uses in the village comparatively?
Yeah, Trustee Stevenson, I'll try and respond and any of our team members can add. We have certainly looked at that. We do have a detailed traffic assessment and parking assessment that looks at the available parking in the downtown area. It's quite enlightening that there does appear to be parking at least available that could be used for the purpose of this museum. We know there are special events at Agawam Park. We know there are other cultural centers and other museums in the downtown area. And we have looked at them. None of them appeared, and Anthony, maybe you can add to this, but we did look for records pertaining to any special permits and we're not able to locate any. So we feel that, you know, this is unique, but we're complying with the village regulations in submitting for this. And we do have parking on-site, more so than some of these other facilities that, Trustee Stevenson, you're mentioning. Again, I would direct you to the traffic assessment and parking assessment. It is very enlightening and it's very helpful. And we feel we've provided substantial evidence to support the relief that's being sought. We have done the parking calculations based on the use, but my expectation is that they overestimate the actual parking that's required just based on the type of use that will take place here. So I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, my point is being that it seems unfair to hold this application to such a high number of spaces when all the other museums in the village don't have any spaces almost, so.
That's not actually correct. The Southampton Museum is opposite the Presbyterian Church and it's in a commercial neighborhood. The Presbyterian Church has roughly 60-plus parking spaces that are available to the museum. This visitor center is going to be in a residential neighborhood, and that is distinctly different.
Well, that's one entity, and I think it's a play on words. I think you said that it is available to them and not that it belongs to them. I mean, look, we are playing semantic on words. I mean, the truth and the heart of the matter. I mean, the things that have come up just from, you know, who is being represented here? What we are actually here for this evening, specifically when this public hearing opened up, was for a parking application. And from us being here specifically with the intent of what this public hearing was about, and the purview was clearly stated when we opened up the meeting and the evidence of what we put in. I've heard tonight about suggestive ideas. I am a trustee of the Preservation League of New York State. I sit on the Board of the Museum Association of New York. Sarah Kautz is the Director of Preservation Long Island, which covers all of Long Island, and she has seeded underneath her plenty of experience. So between me and her and MPV, we have a wealth of experience. I also am certified in municipal zoning. So the level of things that we have seen, we have never been put through the wringer for so much of the semantics. So really what we're talking here is really something other than parking. It's really something other than the variance that we see. So again, tonight is proven a show of other than what we're really talking about. So we're from parking to everything else. If we pulled out the transcript and actually took a wordplay on how much was talked about parking and the actual variance and the subject of what we're here for tonight, how much did we really discuss that was in association with the public hearing about parking? So let's stay on target and really talk about parking because it is about parking tonight after all. And let's stay in the purview of parking because this is not what we're talking about.
Thank you, Dr. Key. Ken Gray here speaking. It's about two things. It's about the special exception use and about the parking waiver. And I'm just going to ask all participants to direct their comments to the mayor and the board and not to have dialogue in between each other. We want to have a smooth process here. So if comments are going to be made, they should be made to the mayor and the board and not in between participants in the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, and I appreciate everyone waiting until called on. And so I don't see any additional hands up. We can wait a few moments, see if anyone else would like to make a public comment in this public hearing. Okay, I don't see any. So I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next portion of our meeting is
Thank you for your time.
Suggested resolutions.
Mayor, Monty Russo is asking to speak again.
Yes, we'll get Monty in here. We're done with the public hearing. She's just in time because we have a communication to the board. So Monty, thank you very much. The floor is all yours.
Just give it a second to bring Monty in. Hi, Monty, you're in. Can you start your camera, please, and unmute? That's the unmute. Here, I'll send you a request to start video. There you go. You can start, sir.
Okay, sorry, I actually been driving, listened to this whole fun event tonight. So I pulled over and I'm ready to talk. So I live at 29 South Street. I have been a resident for 14 years. I built my dream home in the village and I'm a full-time resident here now. I enjoy Southampton very much. Unfortunately, on South Street, I share the street with the village of Southampton that has a sump at the end of the street. And the street has not been paved in my 14 years of ownership. I knocked down a house and built a beautiful home. And my taxes have increased multiple times, never once to put in a reduction and look to keep the place perfect. Unfortunately, the street has, on the village, some property, vehicles that come in and out that are extremely dirty, that carry a lot of dirt, one being the sweeper and other machinery. And it is in a residential neighborhood. And unfortunately, the village has a property that is not paved like everyone else to keep the dirt to a minimum. And the road is uneven and has cracks, water issues, along with unevenness, that they're like mini ponds where you could have literally birds hanging out, ducks and whoever. I brought this to the attention of the Mr. Gillespie and crew and have left multiple phone calls in a voicemail. We can't use the voicemail box as a COVID excuse anymore. And so I decided to go there on my own. When I went there on my own to visit Mr. Gillespie, he said, oh, unfortunately, the roads and pavement have been distributed already through new contracts. And I don't know what to tell you about this issue. It's unfortunate because I live on this dead-end street and it's just a slop house of dirt and grime that is done mostly by the village. The street sweepers even, the street sweepers bring their materials in and out off the street where even when they come up on the street, it knocks out all the stuff because of the divots and unevenness and the roundness that I asked Mr. Gillespie to do a site visit with me, which I left my phone number, which he neglected to try to do so. After, of course, when I knew I was going to approach the Board of Trustees and the mayor, all of a sudden, I've had now three times yesterday where they cleaned the street, but that's a temporary situation. There's more to it. There's also been a, there was a new application that started to build a house at 23 South Street and built a $4.9 million house, which is now completed, which I have put in concern in regards to the builder who, where you can have signs on our properties, private property, please do not park, have put additional divots and destruction to the properties of the village, of my own and the other neighbors, where they took up our grass and it needs to be graded. I had put back in May and June a comment with Officer Perez, nice Mr. Officer Perez. And they put comments in on that. And I've also visited the building, the building department to meet Mr. Tin and voiced my concerns, which said the builder would not get his CVO because of the destruction of people that work in Southampton, that live in Riverhead and elsewhere, that destruct Southampton and don't take care of Southampton. And noticed that they were told they were not getting the CVO till completed, where it was supposed to be graded and at this time of year will require sod, not grass, because it'll be left till May in hopes that it'll grow again. I'm requiring a site visit from all that are involved and looking at the road and the concern that I get the same privilege with my tax increases to live the same life that everyone else does and not because I'm on a dead-end road that I'm neglected. This is unfortunate, and there should be penalties involved with builders destructing other people's property, and they should not get their CFOs until completed task of preserving a beautiful community. I knocked down an old home from the 30s and built a new home in 2000 something, whenever that was, 14 years ago. I'm just trying to get it all out, so we're not going on. And make good use of this. Another comment would be, the village has neglected to close the gate, which you should, guys should be looking into, a mechanical gate that opens it and closes it. I've watched many different people over the years come into the open property and drop off their debris, which leaves garbage in a residential neighborhood or contractors looking to get rid of their stuff. It's left unlocked and open at night. And you should all be aware, if this is a true fact, because this is a sump back 50 years ago, I could gain the information to find out from neighbors, but supposedly a little boy 50 years ago drowned in that sump area. So you leave this open for a lot of abuse on good taxpayers' belief. I'm willing to meet with you all privately afterwards, face to face, and am a good resident. I have reported different things that help the village and community and would like to be an arm in this to beautify, not destroy or neglect our properties. I know it's a fast-opening statement from all this that you had to take in. There's multiple things here. Does anybody have any questions in regard to this that I'm happy to supply information?
Monty, thank you. No particular questions, but first I want to say thanks for coming on here. I wholeheartedly agree with you. What you're saying is actually not new. Myself and/or the deputy mayor who's liaison to the Public Works Department, whenever you want, we're happy to come down, do a personal site visit. If we can get that street paved for you, we would love to do it. I know the street particularly because I actually looked at 23 South Street, a little bit out of my price range. Obviously, a builder bought it and it's not what I was looking to do, but I know exactly where you are. I've been there a couple of times. I've lobbed those complaints into Mr. Gillespie and we'll have them come down. You should never have a busy signal. No one should be telling you they can't help you. And if you ever run into a problem, feel free to call mayor's office, extension 222. We'll get back to you immediately. We have a quality of life app called See Click Fix, so you can download that on your phone. It's one word, and you could actually put any of your quality life complaints. We just installed this, thanks to Miranda, less than a year ago. A lot of residents like it. You can take a picture. And someone from the Department of Public Works will get back to you. We've got great people. There's a great department head over there that can help you out. And we would love to help get South Street cleaned up. We'd love to clean up that sump area. That gate needs to be closed. There can't be debris or dirt falling off village trucks, completely unacceptable. And we'd love, we aim to please, we'd like to serve our residents. And I appreciate the heads up to us. Probably best if we can get going on the meeting here because we've got a few other resolutions on the agenda. But you can call us up, we'll contact you, whatever it is. We've got Veterans Day on Thursday, but after that, we're happy to come on down. You name the time, we'll be there.
I would like to leave my phone number for the record, is that best?
You know, you might have a grand total of 20-something people, but we'll take it here. You can call us up, I'll take it down right now. I want you to send it to Miranda.
Mr. Russo, why don't you actually email it to me? I'm the liaison for the department at DPW and I'd be very happy to come and take a look myself.
Well, well, he already had, he already had it and neglected to my open for two days to say, come on down anytime that works.
Mr. Russo, it'll be my pleasure to come and meet you.
I would love to meet you, I would love to meet you all too. Thank you very much.
G arrest at Southampton Village.org.
G arrest at Southampton Village.org.
I don't have a pen, but I'll call the Mayor's Office and figure it out. Thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monte, thank you. Okay, we'll keep on going here. We've got our suggested resolution, Charlene, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number one, resolved that the claims for the warrant dated November 9th, 2021 totaling $367,628.53 or an A-10 general fund and $28,714.49 warrant each six capital fund be audited and approved. Motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number two, reading, the reading of the minutes of the public sessions of October 26, 2021 and November 2nd, 2021 be dispensed and those minutes be accepted as filed by the village clerk and those actions taken at that meeting be and hereby are ratified and approved. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number three, resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the equal allocation of the funds received in the amount, I'm sorry, of the received funds in federal community development block grant funds to the board, selected organizations, which would be Heart of the Hamptons and the community and Southampton Daycare Center and authorizes the mayor to execute any and all documentation that may be required to receive such grant funds. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number four, resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the acceptance of the application for special exemption permit filed by the East End African American Museum and Center for Excellence, DPA, Paris Concert Museum. This approval includes the acceptance to waive the parking requirements. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number five, that the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton authorizes the village clerk to publish the notice of public hearing to be held on Thursday, December 9th, 2021 at 6:00 PM via Zoom regarding the 2021-2022 tentative capital budget. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Resolution number six, whereas the Village Board of Trustees adopted a resolution on April 20th, 2021, granting a special use exemption, special use permit to 71 Hills LLC to operate the property that it owns at 71 Hill Street as a hotel and for workforce housing. And whereas the application submitted by the applicant was for a special permit for a resort hotel use and workforce housing permit pursuant to Village Code Section 116-5F. And whereas the resolution adopted by the Village Board on April 20th, 2021 correctly referred to the Village Code Section 116-5F, but it also incorrectly referred to another section of the code, Section 116-5G, which is applicable to special permits for a transient hotel use. And whereas the applicant does not intend to use or operate the premises for a transient hotel use, be therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, that the resolution adopted by the Village Board on April 20th, 2021 is hereby amended to delete all references to a transient hotel use and to the code section related to transient hotels in the Village or in the Village Business District, Section 116-5G. And be it further resolved that the second resolved clause of the April 20th, 2021 resolution is hereby amended to read as follows, resolved that the Board of Trustees, they're hereby approved the application and grants the applicant with a special permit to use and operate the property as a resort hotel and workforce housing pursuant to the Village Code, Section 116-5F. And be it further resolved that all other aspects of the resolution dated April 20th, 2021 are hereby ratified and continued to be fully restated herein. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
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 Second, sorry, trustee Roy Stevenson, all in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number seven, resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the stipend in the amount of $35,000 for Tin Ho So to assume the duties of department head of the Building Department effective November 10th, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Resolution number eight, resolved that the Board of Trustees appointed Michael Sinclair as police sergeant consistent with the collective bargaining agreement at a salary of $167,621.80 effective November 3rd, 2021. Resolution is now amended to read, resolved that the Board of Trustees appoints Michael M. Sinclair as police sergeant consistent with the collective bargaining agreement at a salary of $158,133.77 effective November 3rd, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Just as a point of reference, I wanted to note that there was a typo when I was looking at the, I actually inadvertently put the salary for the detective sergeant on the resolution rather than the sergeant's salary.
That was my question, thank you.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number nine, resolved that the Board of Trustees appoints Craig Goldberg to the Board of Ethics effective November 9th, 2021 with an end term date of June 30th, 2023. This appointment fills the vacancy from Christian Pico, who resigned effective September 21st, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I respectfully abstain. I have nothing against Goldberg, however, given the issue last week. I respectfully abstain, given, I do like Mr. Goldberg, however, given the issue that occurred with the Hartner report, I just, I just would prefer another candidate, but I respectfully abstain from this resolution.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you, Charlene. Actually, I think Joe is also supposed to abstain from number eight because he abstained in the last meeting from that also. So Ken, I guess, can, is any guidance would be appreciated.
I think it's a separate resolution, but counsel.
Well, you know what, we'll keep on moving on. It doesn't matter either way. It doesn't matter.
Okay. Our resolution number 10, resolved that the Board of Trustees appoint Kyle Robinson to the position of full-time laborer in the Highway Department at a salary of $43,293.31 effective November 10th, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number 11, whereas in connection with the priority projects identified in the Harmful Algal Bloom HAB Action Plan that are being undertaken in partnership with the town trustees, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and the nonprofit Lake Agawam Conservancy, the Village of Southampton recognizes the need to reduce inputs into Lake Agawam in order for any in-water interventions for aquatic habitat restoration to be successful. And whereas the Village of Southampton has applied for and obtained water quality grant funding under Suffolk County and New York State Programs for Green Infrastructure, Bio-Swales and Other Drainage Improvements on Gin Lane at the south end of Lake Agawam that are designed to reduce discharges of pollutants from direct stormwater runoff into the lake. And whereas the Lake Agawam Conservancy has coordinated with the village to further, to further the positive impact of the benefit of this project by expanding its scope into Phase Two program designed to capture additional stormwater runoff with underground drainage structures that can handle the capacity and volume of runoff for a larger area of the watershed. And whereas the current Gin Lane Project Phase One includes the removal of invasive species, Japanese knot wood, not weed, maintenance of existing wetland vegetation and installation of additional vegetation in certain adjacent areas that will act as the final level of plant filtration before stormwater enters Lake Agawam. And whereas the Conservancy has worked collaboratively with the village and adjacent neighbors to ensure an outcome that satisfies the parameters of the grant, preserves the public interest and most importantly, is reflective of the sensitive nature of this area of shoreline for Lake Agawam. And whereas, to ensure that the current Phase One improvements will work with the additional drainage infrastructure plan for Phase Two, the engineering firm McLean shall be involved in this construction management for the project where the Lake Agawam Conservancy will pay for McLean's professional services fees in connection with this oversight. And whereas the Conservancy has also agreed at its sole expense to install and manage and maintain an additional vegetation, now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby approves the most recent plan for Phase One prepared by Nelson Pope and Voorhees dated September 23rd, 2021 as updated by the plan prepared by L.K. McLean entitled Village of Southampton, Lake Agawam, Gin Lane Drainage Improvements dated October 21st. And attached here too, along with Lake Agawam Conservancy's additional management and oversight of the vegetation that will be installed to augment and protect this area and at its sole expense. And be it further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees authorize the mayor to execute any and all agreements related to the installation, ongoing stewardship and maintenance of said vegetation. And be it further resolved, in order to fully realize the benefits of mitigating direct point source pollution into Lake Agawam, the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes Phase Two of the Gin Lane Drainage Project to be a joint partnership with the Lake Agawam Conservancy for the purpose of design, funding, grant applications and any additional requirements for full implementation. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number 12, resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to execute a contract renewal between the Board of Fire Commissioners of the Bridgehampton Fire District and the Incorporated Village of Southampton for the operation of a Motorola paging system in connection with firefighting and ambulance service as requested. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Very second.
Okay.
I was muted, sorry.
The contract was drafted by our village attorney, Ken Gray. It was sent over to the Board of Commissioners. They have reviewed it, approved it. It extends our existing dispatch contract for another additional 10 years, starting with the first year, I believe, the contract, the village will receive $169,333. And actual annual increases, coal increases through the year 2031. The final amount in that last year, the contract will be $214,507. So they want to continue their relationship with us. And this is a great intermunicipal agreement with the fire district. So if the board has any questions about it, attorney Charlie, answer.
Charlene, it's actually going to be scheduled to be on their agenda for tomorrow night. They have a meeting tomorrow night to approve, but they have tentatively approved the terms.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlene. Thank you, Ken. And just Roy, trustee Stevenson, just wanted to thank you. You've done a great job as the liaison to the fire department. Definitely seen, you know, good work under your leadership and wanted to thank you for that. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Can I second that?
Okay, so on the motion, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number 13, resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the revised retainer agreement from Be Ready Fishfin Hatter and Donovan LLP to include utilization of law clerks at a rate of $125 per hour. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? I believe that concludes the resolution portion.
Okay, thank you, Charlene. I believe we have a walk-on appointment tonight for the ZBA. So I'm just going to ask for a motion. I'll make the motion, but I'll ask for a second from the board to allow a walk-on resolution.
Second.
All in favor? I. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Luke Farron to the zoning board of appeals. This is to fill a vacancy for a term ending June 30th, 2023. So thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move forward to comments from board members. Trustee Arresta, you can begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start with Veterans Day, which is going to be this Thursday, November 11th, as it is every year. There will be a ceremony to honor our veterans in Agawam Park. They usually start about 10:45 at the Presbyterian Church and walk down Job's Lane. And then we have a ceremony that begins about 11 o'clock. And I hope everyone takes the time, if you can, to come down and honor our veterans. It's a very, very nice and well-deserved ceremony to honor the men that have served and women that have served this country. With that being said, you may have heard, I've mentioned it before, you might be aware of, there's also an article on the front page of the Southampton Press last week about the World War I monument that is in Agawam Park. And it's not only a landmark in this village, but it is a monument that honors those that have served in World War I from Southampton. And it's crumbling. I mentioned this before, we passed a resolution for the engineers to come up with a plan so it does not crumble. There's structural problems and we need an upward of $400,000 to properly restore this very significant monument, an important monument to our village. With that being said, we've established there is an appeal. It has started. Miranda was kind enough to set up a GoFundMe page. And it's SHVWW1. If you go to GoFundMe and you could make a donation there, it's going to be on our website. It will go live on Thursday in honor of Veterans Day. We'll be live on the village website as well. And every village resident will be getting a letter about this. And we'd like to be able to get this, to move with this quickly. So I know the generosity of the people of the Village of Southampton and I know how they feel in their hearts that those that have served. and I know uh how they feel in their hearts that those that have served. And uh, it's not only just about it being a landmark, but it does honor the people that have served in our village. So uh, I would, I would appreciate that and be very grateful and thankful for, for uh for, for those that uh would be able to uh support this. Um, there are also another very important thing on our website and what's happening now in the village is the comprehensive plan. Uh, once again, I'm reaching out to everyone. This is your time to have a voice. Uh, you could uh go to the uh, the website. There's a, a link on there. You could take the survey. Uh, there's also a wall and you could write things on the wall and it's very interesting. I love reading what people are writing and uh comments about that. And it, this all goes to uh the uh, the, the company and the people, the, the group that we have that uh, that is working on the comprehensive plan. It, it's everybody's chance now uh to uh to have a say in what our village is going to look like in years to come. Uh, another exciting thing is the holiday fest that the village is uh, uh working with together with uh this Chamber of Commerce. That's going to be Saturday after Thanksgiving. Uh, the uh, the, the scheduled event is just about done and the poster, uh, the flyers and posters will be out in a couple of days. So uh something to uh really look forward to. It's Small Business Saturday, uh as per American Express uh that day. And it, it's all meant to support uh the uh stores and, and the businesses in our village. So um, together with a lot of fun things that, that'll be happening that day as well. So we look forward to that and um uh, the day, Saturday after Thanksgiving. And um, I hope to see everyone on Veterans Day in Agawam Park. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Arresta. Uh, trustee Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to commend and thank for the care for United Methodist Church and the great work that they did. Uh, actually, the work was done by our Boy Scouts uh creating. Yes, can you not hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to commend and thank United Methodist Church on what they have done there. Actually, our Boy Scouts uh did it. They created a blessing box that will hold non-perishable items and things of sensitive natures that people may need. And it's a place that they can go at any time. And it's also the United Methodist Church has opened up uh their church for anyone that does not have a warm place to sleep at night or, and they can have a nice warm breakfast and a lunch to go. So it is truly, as expression says, it takes a village. And this is definitely showing how the village cares for one another. And I commend them and our Boy Scouts for doing such. We want to thank United Methodist Church for inviting the trustees. It was a pleasure to be there. And we thank you for caring so much for our village and residents. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Uh, trustee McLaughlin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to first of all, uh, thank um, or congratulate Eddie West for his employee of the month. I've known the West for several, for years and he's a hard worker and I, you know, he's, he's grew up here. I wanted to commend him again for his hard work. Um, I also want to say I attended the planning uh commission meeting that I, as I said earlier uh last week. And in addition to discussing the usual slate of issues, they also discussed uh possibly the upgrade of the herdring for, for our uh building codes. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing a, a um brief verbal presentation by um, co-chair Lieberman as to how we are going to go forward um or how the village can adopt these uh new ratings. I know the town is currently involved in upgrading their herdring. So I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to um hearing what um co-chair Lieberman has to say about that and uh working with him on that going forward. And I would hopefully to uh the, my fellow trustees will have the support of that because I know we all want to be environmentally conscious and to have the best building practices that we can, we can have. And also in addition to that, um, I also um would encourage uh that we switch to a hybrid model. Uh, the planning commission has a hybrid meetings, meaning all the commission members are in attendance in village hall and they allow the public to zoom in. Um, so I do think to avoid any of these uh complications in the future that we go to a hybrid mall, maybe even eventually um invite the public uh in a limited capacity back in either here or at another uh location. So I would certainly encourage that because I know a lot of residents have approached me about, you know, um, their concerns and they're not all technically savvy in Zoom. So I want to just to let the public know and my fellow board members know. I would encourage uh the board to go to a hybrid mall. So there's no more technical issues going forward. So, so I have and I hope to see everyone on Thursday for Veterans Day. Take care.
Thank you, trustee McLaughlin. Uh, trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um, thank you for your.
Uh, Roy, I think you're on mute.
I'm muted. I am unmuted.
There you go.
Perfect. Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thanks for um the shout-out uh for my work with the fire and ambulance department. Really, I don't do anything. The, the guys who serve in those departments are the guys and the women who serve in those departments are the ones who, who we need to thank continuously. I'm, I'm, I'm always amazed on a day-by-day basis on how uh the folks in, who are our first responders, our volunteers, uh, and, and just all the work they do to keep us safe. It's, it's truly amazing. Uh, I also am amazed as, as I do my job as trustee, I, I'm on the uh uh search, Rob, trustee Brown and I are, I'm, I'm on trustee Brown's uh Police Chief Search Committee. And uh, along with Reverend Brown, uh Father, Father Matrano and Ed Money Penny, a lot of time these people are putting in uh helping us find the best candidates uh for this very important job. Uh, and it's a, it's not only the amount of time, but just the effort and, and, and trying to be fair and trying to be inclusive is, it's just, it's just gratifying to see the work that, that folks are willing to do just because they love the village. Same with the um comprehensive plan, as, as trustee Arresta pointed out, we are seeking public input for developing uh a master plan that truly reflects the wishes of the community going forward. Bill Manger is doing a fantastic job uh bringing in as many uh voices as he can to, to inform uh what, what that, what, what that vision looks like. And I, I can't thank him enough for the time he's putting into it. And in the sewer district uh which is proceeding uh ahead day by day, uh mapping out where, where the lines are going to go, figuring out where the infrastructure is going to go. Uh, Paul Travis and his group are just doing a fantastic job, taking a huge amount of time, again, pretty much totally voluntarily, uh uncompensated, just, just doing it because they want to see the village uh move ahead with this sewer district that we've been talking about for so long. Um, so all of those people deserve our sincere thanks. They certainly have mine. Um, and of course Veterans Day, I, Polly and I bought this toy store back in two thousand and one in September. And it wasn't more than a month or two later than, than I heard the, the noise, the band coming down the street in, in November and looked out the door of my toy store for the first time and saw the Veterans Day Parade in Southampton Village. And it just gave me such a, a moment to reflect on, on how the men and women marching had selflessly uh basically dropped everything in their lives and gone to serve our nation, uh putting themselves at risk. Uh, basically giving up years of their, of their lives uh to provide the freedom that all of us enjoy today. And, and every year since that time, uh I've stepped outside my store to, to watch. And uh, as I, I say in my toy store, the customers all say the same. I just get older. And that's the same thing that's happened with me watching the parade. Uh, when I first started the, the Vietnam vets were the, the young guys. And now they're becoming the older guys and we have guys from uh Iraq and Iran and, you know, more current conflicts. But we just can't thank these, these uh men and women enough for, for what they've done. And it's going to be such an honor for me to, instead of watching the uh parade from the door of my store to actually uh be part of the ceremony in uh Lake Agawam Park. I'm, I'm truly honored to be a part of that. So, so thanks to all the vets for, for all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, uh trustee Stevenson. Uh, and uh appreciate uh your comments. Uh, I have a few comments, but uh we'll keep them on the briefer side tonight. Number one, just wanted to echo our deputy mayor regarding the fundraiser for the World War One Monument. I know she's working very hard on uh, on that project along with the Department of Public Works and the Veterans Affairs Committee. And uh, again, uh just to remind everyone, not only could you go on a Go, GoFundMe page to donate, but there'll also be a mailer uh being distributed uh for donations. Uh, we would appreciate all donations, uh large or small for this project. The goal is to raise approximately four hundred thousand dollars for the repairs uh so that it looks uh beautiful and we do the World War One Monument justice. So we'll continue to remind people about that fundraiser. Uh, number two, a reminder regarding the comprehensive master plan, we've been moving nicely through the first public work session. We've got surveys on our website. So just another friendly reminder to village residents to take the survey. Again, you don't have to be a village resident. You could be a stakeholder, a business owner, anyone that cares about the village. But please do uh take a few minutes of your time to take that survey. The more information we have, the better off we are. Uh, that uh is just important to get as much input as possible. Uh, also wanted to uh, uh thank uh members of our Southampton Village Police Department for uh handling. Uh, we had a meeting at the uh Justice Court uh just uh this past week and we had a great turnout. And I just wanted to thank everyone for uh helping out. We have a little bit of follow-up, but we'll be making sure we take care of that. Uh, again, looking forward to the capital budget in uh December. That should be an exciting and uh a good conversation. And then lastly, uh wanted to uh thank our members of the Public Works Department, particularly the uh Parks Department for helping uh get Veterans Day set up this upcoming Thursday. We're looking forward to it. And in particular, in addition to, of course, thanking uh Bill Jones and Mr. Grisnick from the Veterans Affairs Committee and Commission, I also wanted to uh thank uh Officer uh Lubold. Uh, her father will be uh the guest speaker at Veterans Day. And uh, thanks to her and the Veterans Affairs uh Commission, uh they came up with a great idea uh to honor uh the thirteen veterans who uh lost their lives uh in Afghanistan. So there'll be thirteen uh empty chairs uh this Veterans Day. Uh, behind them will be a flag bearer with uh members of uh law enforcement and first responders who also have served. So wanted to thank those members of our community for participating and showing their support. Uh, so that being said, I'd like to make a motion uh to adjourn uh the meeting. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All in?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night, everyone.